Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
If I could ask, as people are leaving, to please leave quietly so we can proceed quickly because pretty soon the public will be coming in here for the public testimony.
We don't want that again.
So ma'am, public defender, if we have your written testimony.
Yes.
If you could summarize, I know some of us have questions or comments, so we'd appreciate it, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Please identify yourself and proceed.
Yes, Councilman Greenlee. And I guess I would be thanking Councilman President Clark for allowing me the opportunity to share my testimony on my 2018 budget appropriation. My name is Keira Bradford-Grey, and I am the chief defender of the Defender Association of Philadelphia. With me is Mr. James McHugh, who is my first assistant, as well as Ms. Kristen Muehl, who is our chief financial officer.
Thank you.
To begin, and I believe you understand that, the Defender Association represents those who cannot afford an attorney in various divisions. Last year alone, in 2016, the Defender Association represented 62,182 of Philadelphia's residents. Many of them are Philadelphia's residents, some were not, I should say. We represented them in various different hearings, including criminal cases, juvenile delinquency cases, child welfare cases, that's child abuse and neglect hearings, civil mental health cases and criminal mental health cases, appeals, violations of probation, and the like. That does not include some of the expungement work we do on a daily basis. It also does not include some of the reentry work we engage in, in which I plan to go through on our slide presentation. Just in starting our discussion about the Defender Association, I do want to go into the rich history of that office. We have been around since 1934, and we have been providing legal services before the Supreme Court gave the right to states to provide legal counsel to those who could not afford it. So we have a long history of expertise that we are very proud of. Our office, not only does it provide local expertise and analysis, but it also provides information on legal analysis and legal standards to the state and nationally. Our office was very instrumental in working on a case that changed the legal standards by which juveniles can be sentenced in the United States, leading to a landmark decision by the Supreme Court forcing all states to reevaluate life without parole sentences for juveniles. As such, Philadelphia was called to reexamine a little over 300 individuals who had been sentenced as youth to life without parole in prison. The Defender Association, only representing six of those 300, agreed to take on 225 of those cases. Because of our expertise and our experience, we knew we could do it right, and we could give the city some relief instead of hiring 300 lawyers to represent these individuals. We did it ourselves. Our office has steadfastly worked to make sure that we are providing quality representation to those individuals. We have our lawyers that go all across the state, visiting individuals in custody from Gredeford State Prison in Montgomery County all the way to Erie, Pennsylvania. They travel in pairs, they sleep over, they make sure that they build up a rapport with the client and their family. They try to, they work to understand who the client was at the time of defense when they were teenagers, and who they are now, some as senior citizens. The type of work that they do is they produce this type of packet for every client. This is a very lengthy packet, and it involves a lot of work. We give this to the district attorney's office for recommendations and negotiations. We also give it to the courts and the parole board. This type of work is what we're capable of. And this is throughout history, the type of information that we have produced. I will be remiss if I did not say that I am proud to be the executive director of the Defender Association. I started my legal career there, and I have firsthand knowledge of the type of legal scholars, social justice advocates, and leaders that that office produces. But in all, knowing that we have a rich history of legal analysis and trial work, we now come to today's time. And we know that we have a unique position to help with some of the current issues that we see, we find ourselves in as a result of a lot of past practices in our criminal justice system. We are now in the era of reform. We're reexamining all of the collateral damage that has been done based on policies that kind of focused on a black and white approach to rehabilitation or criminality. We also, we very much know that criminality is not black and white, there's a lot of gray areas, and we believe that our services are very much needed today so that we can make sure that we have meaningful reform. And with the wealth of information that the Defender Association takes in, we can bring forth some real meaningful creative solutions to solving some of our problems and making our communities safer. Long before now, public safety has never been echoed out of the mouth of the Defender Association, or it hasn't been echoed out of the mouths of other people who don't really understand our work. It has been really owned by law enforcement. I believe that we have shown, and we will show, that the Defender Association too helps to make communities safer by working with the individuals that wind themselves to our doorsteps. So as such, we have expanded our mission to not only include great trial advocacy and constitutional expertise, but we have gone into other areas that we understand are necessary for today's time. We look at what caused or created some of these issues. And that is a lack of understanding people that come through our system. And you know, this is, the net widening of our system allowed us to do what we would call, or some would call, assembly line justice, where we're processing people under the same guise, that everyone has the same situations and have the same needs. We know now that is not true. And so our office has expanded our mission to identify the social needs of our client to direct them to meaningful rehabilitation. We also use data and technology to study trends and patterns so that we know where to put our resources and where to shape our priorities. We also have started to engage and untap the power of the community so that we can start to make collaborations in areas where our services cannot extend. Some of the areas that we have expanded to, which we are doing in our own structure and restructuring our office so that we can produce some of this work, especially in the role of social services. Our office is looking at the problem with mass incarceration and understanding that mass incarceration is a real issue of less humanization in our system, and so we seek to provide more information that guides us to how we are supposed to work to better our clients when they come back into their communities so that they're not a threat, but they are actually productive members and working productive members of that community contributing to the tax base. One of the things that our chief of social services has done is create opportunities for us to align people with needed treatment on the same day. Prior to him being creative enough to go out into the community and find meaningful programs to come into our Criminal Justice Center, there was a six to eight wait week to get people connected to services. This meant they were either serving lengthy delays in custody, or they were released without being connected to needed services, which they would pretty much fall into relapse situations or do things that were more destructive. I think we have a member today of The Wedge, who is one of our partners, and who has agreed to bring his services into our purview, and the judges are elated to have someone that is willing and able to take some of our clients, make the referrals, give it back to the judge so that they can make good recommendations as to alternatives to incarceration. This, in effect, helps to reduce mass incarceration. Mass incarceration doesn't mean we don't need jail at all. It just means that we can make smarter decisions on what to do with people based on having information at our fingertips and better ways to service our community needs. Another way that we are working to help our systems progress and reducing our prison population is bringing in technology into the sphere of our criminal justice system. Our lawyers, our judges, our clients, we teamed up with a wonderful woman who is a tax attorney, who created an app to help people understand what services were in their own neighborhoods. And our chief of the adult social service unit teamed up with this woman and put in many of our defender services, so now this app has over 1,200 services that are available in our communities that are at our fingertips. So that when judges are looking at, who should I give an ankle monitor to? Those who don't have a home, how can I give an ankle monitor to them? We can go onto that app, look in terms of housing, and see what's in the neighborhood and area, call that place, and ask basic questions as to whether or not they will assist the court in making sure the person has a successful transition back to court to face their charges. So I think that was a very creative way that we brought technology into the sphere of the court, and we're also making it very possible for people to be released by making smart decisions. Another way that the Defender Association really works to improve the quality of our services and improve the outcomes of the individuals coming into our courthouse is by using data. We have become more technologically inclined, we use data to inform the process, we look at trends and patterns of criminality, we look at cases and offenses that are happening in each councilmatic district. We recently gave each council member a snapshot of the types of cases that are occurring in their own districts, and we did it based on the addresses that each of our clients gave us at the time of the representation. Those were reported to each council, and not only did we give them the offense type, we gave them the age, the gender, and the race of those individuals, so they can start to really get a snapshot of what's going on and work with programs and organizations in their own districts to solve some of their own problems so that the criminal justice system doesn't have to do it all. We identify challenges, and we work with other individuals that are out there, are working on these challenges, to team up and make sure that we have better opportunities to connect people so that they are supported in their communities, and they don't have to use this system as a revolving door. Another thing that our policy division that we recently created allows us to do is bring in money to work on special projects. I mean, the trends and patterns that we see are real. We know and we understand what's driving some of the behaviors, so we want to make sure that we're looking at opportunities to bring in money to work on these projects with our other criminal justice stakeholders, as well as our councilmatic stakeholders and their community members. Under the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge, our policy staff member was very instrumental in securing $490,000 over a period of three years to produce what we call bail advocates. Bail advocates help inform the bail process and some of the bail practices. We have been engaging in this practice for a very short period of time, but we're already seeing a dramatic improvement in some of the decision-making that happened at the very initial stage. Our office represents almost every client in the city who gets, oh, I should say individual, I'm sorry, in the city who gets arrested. And before this, there was no real meaningful opportunity for bail advocacy. Now, we, under the MacArthur initiative, we are putting in place better practices for bail advocacy. We still have ways to go, and I hope that we look at some of the other reforms that are going around the country and try to figure out how we fit those things into our system. I think it will make our justice system a much more fair process and have better outcomes. We also have secured funding for technical assistance grants, or technical grants, to increase our ability to produce data. That is what allowed us to give some of our information to our city council to let them see what's going on in their districts, but it also allows us to understand our own practices and where we need to put our resources and attention. And lastly, we were able to secure a $38,000 grant to increase our community outreach. Community outreach is extremely important to us, especially during this time, because we want to be out there, present in the community, to let them understand the extent of our services, as well as be educated by them and educate them about the processes of the criminal justice system and how they can help us help them. We were also awarded a grant to work on a special project based on the trends and patterns that we saw with some of our juvenile justice female population. They were coming into our justice system in record numbers. We were noticing this, this caused us much alarm, and we embarked on a partnership with Big Brother, Big Sister to lend their model, which has been proven best practices, to help us provide some meaningful interventions with our juvenile justice youth. That partnership is not the first partnership of its kind. I was actually engaged in the first partnership of that kind, where we teamed up with Big Brother, Big Sister at my old post in Montgomery County. The collateral benefits of that program were amazing. Not only did people make it out of the system, it didn't come back, but they had better results at school, and they had better relationships at home. The types of support systems that Big Brother, Big Sister provides was so instrumental in turning around the trajectory of that youth. We didn't see them back. I think out of a number, I think we had about 40 matches, and it was a short period of time. We only saw three that had some relapses. So I thought that was really good progress, and it brought different approaches to address some of the issues that our youth are facing. Part of our community collaboration is looking at our own work and looking at our own areas where we can, to make sure that we're improving our services. And so we teamed up with the Reentry Think Tank, that's part of the mayor's reentry coalition, so that we can understand where we have been missing the mark on representing our clients and not understanding what's important to them. The Reentry Think Tank has really given us some real truths about how they felt going through the system with some public defenders, and we take this very seriously because we always want to be better in our service delivery, but we want to be more thoughtful and deliberate. So allowing them to come in and help us understand some of the intricacies that they are dealing with and that they face in coming out of our system, it allows us to be more thoughtful advocates and provide more, better information to the decision-makers so that they can make sure that they are understanding everything a person needs in order to be successful when they get out into the community. Like I said, our community partnerships and our community engagement has brought us a wealth of information, but we also bring a wealth of information to those communities. We provide expungement clinics, we provide know your rights information, we provide collateral consequence information that are both in English and Spanish. We make sure that we are present in churches, community centers, just to answer general questions that anyone has. We avail ourselves to any council member that has town halls, that needs information about our services or the system's process in general. So we do these, and this is something different than we have done before, but it's really helped us become better. And lastly, not lastly, almost lastly, one of the things that we know about our services that we are very, very good in training and legal analysis and data-driven solutions. But we also found out through our initiative in MacArthur that our services are actually more efficient than any other council in the system. And I think that is really telling, that you have an organization that represents 62,000 cases a year that has been deemed to be much more efficient than anyone else. And if you did not have us, you'd pay about $44.5 million in legal representation based on the number of days that someone would spend in jail, because our services have proven to cut that jail time down by a third based on our model and structure. So I think that is a real testament to our work, a real testament to the fact that you have this organization that not only partners with you on community safety issues, but also on valid and efficient spending of taxpayer dollars. Another cost savings that we provide this city is through our reentry services. Our reentry unit helps to engage in meaningful early parole, I guess what I would call packages that they present to the court, so that the court understands that if they were to grant parole early to some individuals, what would they be doing in the community? Will they be supported with real meaningful opportunities to rehabilitate, or will they be a danger when they get back out? Ninety percent of our petitions that we filed have been granted. We saved the city over $7 million in prison costs alone, and that's a very conservative analysis. But I think that work is really a good strength of ours because we work so closely with the individuals, we work with their families, and we develop a plan based on now understanding some of the needs that they had that we did not understand before. I think that our office is only going to increase these petitions through our MacArthur partnership. We got some money and a grant to provide, I think, 30% more of these parole petitions for individuals in our system, whether or not we represented them initially. There are also some of them were private council cases that are now in jail and serving a sentence, that we will grant parole petitions in terms of finding reentry services for them. So that is also going to save the city more money than we already have demonstrated. Now, in order to do all these things, we have to continue to keep experienced lawyers. I know that every organization that came before you today has hammered the fact that there is an attrition problem, based on some of the salaries that we are able to give. We get that we're civil services, we get that we're government, we know we're not private industry, and we're not here to be rich. However, we do think that some of the value that we provide has not been really realized over the past decades. And so today, we are here to really make the pitch of supporting salary parity for our lawyers and our staff. If you look at this slide, you see that after three years, our lawyer's salaries pretty much stay the same while our district attorney counterparts' salaries increase, and I would say dramatically, because we've never seen those types of salaries in our office. After year four, I think the district attorney's salary goes a little above $65,000, while our attorneys still stay at just a little above 50. And now in year five, there is an $18,000 disparity between their lawyers, line assistants, and our lawyers. And I think that's really glaring, because the work that we provide, and I'm not saying that anyone's more important than anyone else, but the work that we provide is equally important, especially in today's time, where there was never really an opportunity for the defenders to present information that would be pertinent to decision-making. The war on crime didn't give us that space. Today, we have that space, and we're willing to step up to the plate and provide it, and we have shown that we've done that time and time again. Our turnover rate for three years is glaring. In 2013, we hired 30 new lawyers, we invested a lot of time, a lot of money into training these lawyers to be well-rounded advocates. After three years, 47% of our lawyers left. After four years, it gets even higher. And a lot of them, upon exit interviews, we understand that many of them just can't stay to support their families or support any kind of lifestyle, whatever that may be, based on the salaries that they are given. Our lawyers don't have pensions, they have to put into their own retirement, so that comes out of their salaries as well. So these things really create a bit of a problem for the Defender Association to keep good lawyers to continue to produce the great work that we do. We want to be able to retain these lawyers because we know experienced lawyers can do the legal analysis necessary and also the other collateral benefits that city council and our justice system needs at this time. We did a study for public defender salaries around the country and looked at states that are comparable in size to Philadelphia, and we found that Philadelphia really does start their public defenders at the lowest amount, which is 48.5. I think that's also the lowest amount of the other partners in our city, the city solicitor as well as the district attorney, they all testified that their starting salaries were above $50,000. The Defender Association's starting salary is at 48,500, and we've pretty much been at that starting salary for about a decade without having any kind of increase in that opportunity for increase in that area. And all I wanted to do is come here to present the information that we provided city council prior to this budget testimony, but ask for your support and equal pay for our office and our staff. The work we do is so instrumental, and we will continue to do it because we love the work, but it is really hard when we continuously have to train new lawyers to get them up to speed. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you for your testimony, and good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
And before I start, I just want to thank you. We referenced earlier the Criminal Justice Reform Committee that you co-chaired along with our good councilman Jones and Deputy Commissioner Bethel. Really appreciate your time and service. On that note, we will realize some fruit out of that.
Thank you.
You actually covered a number of the questions I had in this, but you know, jotted down some questions with respect to your testimony, turn it around here. A little crooked here. On the retention issue, and by the way, the district attorney's office, I don't know if anybody told you, they kind of like supported parity.
Yeah, we were watching.
They started out by saying, they said they didn't oppose parity, you know, a little stronger than that, but.
And I thank Kathleen Martin for that statement.
They kind of alluded to the fact that they recognized that clearly was not parity. In terms of retention, because the district attorney's office talked about the inability to keep attorneys five, they kind of talked about four or five years, and similarly, you talked about the timeline. Is it in terms of the, I guess in comparison to the DA's office and yours, and I'll understand if you don't know the answer to that question, but are we looking like a similar track that after around four or five years, people kind of go another direction?
Well, what we showed you is after three years, people, we get a huge attrition issue. So three years, we lose almost half of our attorneys that we invest in heavily, and so it just goes up from there. I think last year, we showed you a slide that after five years, we're losing almost 67% of our staff that we brought in that previous five-year period.
Okay. Walk me through the court-appointed versus defender's representation. If it's understood that the person does not have the wherewithal to have an attorney represent them in a criminal case, how does that work? Does the court say you will be represented by the defender, or they do the court-appointed?
Yeah.
And for some reason, I have no idea what goes on over there, you know. Is it like, is the court-appointed like probably more last minute, or?
No.
Or is it the defender is, I mean, tell me, what's that process like?
So when a person is arrested, they are arraigned, and that's by a bail commissioner that tells them the charges that they are facing. During that process, our court's pretrial division makes a determination as to financial ability to pay for a lawyer.
Okay.
At that time, a court will make a determination as to whether or not someone will get the public defender, and if the public defender has a conflict of interest, meaning we may represent a co-defendant of that person, or we may represent someone that just presents a huge conflict, they will appoint a lawyer at the time of the arraignment to represent the individual if they're deemed.
Throughout the case, okay.
Yes, throughout the case. So that representation begins at the time of arraignment, just like ours. I guess it depends on how quickly the court-appointed lawyer meets with their client, but it's pretty much at the time that someone has been arrested and arraigned on their charges.
So why do we have two different tracks, court-appointed versus defender?
So court-appointed lawyers are usually private lawyers who take on these cases. Defender Association, this is strictly what we do. And I think that basically because this is what we do, this is our model, this is our work and our structure, we are able to dispose of cases in a more expeditious way. We understand the legal issues, we have the personnel and staff that helps us process these cases and work them up and do exactly what we need to do in terms of disposing of them. So when this study was done by the MacArthur Foundation of how the Defender Association, or how quickly the Defender Association disposes of its cases versus other lawyers in the system, we were really surprised to see the outcome of that. And it was a testament to our work. We go about our work in such a very meticulous way. We train our lawyers in specific ways and specific areas. Our lawyers rotate through various areas of the system until they gain the experience they need. And so the lawyers that are working on the more severe cases are some of the more experienced lawyers, that they understand how to try cases, and they're not trying to figure it out, you know, as a first time.
When you say dispose of cases, that can sometimes mean taking a plea. What do you mean by that?
It could mean whether or not we brought a case to trial, and it was complete and final, or someone has decided it's in their best interest to plead to the offense, and that case is now complete.
Okay. One thing that caught my eye with respect to, you said that the members of your organization don't have pensions?
They don't.
So you are listed as a, what, nonprofit or quasi-government entity, or?
Yeah, we are a nonprofit organization.
Just period, nonprofit, period. So the reason I mention that, because we have, on a couple of occasions, brought in non-traditional city employees in our pension system at a much reduced cost if they had to go out on their own, either as individuals or the organization. You know, we got some of the primo benefits according to people that are walking around here. I think they're okay.
Right.
I may want to look into that, because we actually thought, when our pension, we had some conversations about opening up our pension system to external applicants, understanding that the more people you have in the system, paying into the system, it relieves some of the burden. So maybe we need to, and I wish we had a law department was still here, if they had to get out of here. We'll reach out, because I think that, you know, the pension issue is probably something that we should be able to figure out a way to resolve. The parity issue, it's clear that you're not at parity, and we just have to figure out a way to make sure that the resources can be available, whatever degree we can ultimately get a consensus on. Yes, sure.
That's something I was also thinking about. If I'm correct, PHDC is also, going back to my time when I was in law department, I know their union, which is, I think, 1986, which represents RDA, Department of Health and Community Development, and PHDC are all within the pension plan.
Right.
And I know when we've gone through some of the reorganization attempts over the years, PHDC did have a pension, from my recollection.
Correct.
So that may be a model to look at.
Yeah.
Because I wasn't aware that the Defender Association, although they're a private nonprofit, did not participate in our pension at all.
Well, actually, PHDC is technically a nonprofit.
Right, exactly.
But it was created by the ordinance of council, I think.
Right, but it's still a private nonprofit, and we can look at that.
Yeah, so we need to look at that, you know, see. Yeah, so we need to look at that, you know, see, at the minimum, that should be relatively easy to come to some conclusion. All right, thank you. I'm going to pass it on to my good friends, my colleagues.
Thank you, Council President.
You're welcome. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Yeah, see, that pension problem you talked about was true for PCDC as well.
Okay.
We never were able to participate in that, and we, you know, there's a difference between city pensions and 401Ks. They're just, they're just start. Where do I begin?
I don't know.
Let me begin by saying, she is not the chief defender, she is my future law partner. When I get out of here, I'm going to law school, and I want to be with you. I have had the pleasure of getting a deeper dive into criminal justice, and not only just what you are about, but what your agency is about, and I thank you for it. I must apologize, the next time I'm in a barber shop and I hear the boys talking about, yeah, I got a real attorney, oh, you got a PD, I'm going to have to say something.
Yes, you are.
I am, I'm going to have to say something. But the general idea that your staff don't come with their A-game is just not true. Although Sam tells me she used to handle you guys all the time, but Sam's exceptional.
I'm sure Sam has some stories.
Sam's exceptional. One of the things I want to dive into, I was at an event in West Philadelphia at the Enterprise Center. A well-dressed young man, still relatively young, came up to me and said, you don't remember me, do you? And I'm looking at him like, I always know if I owe you money, or if the experience wasn't a good experience, but I couldn't place, I knew he was familiar, but come to find out, I had met him up at the lifers banquet up in Grattisford that they have annual. And he had approached me at that point, asking about and beginning to talk about this whole renewed juvenile lifer issue. To see him on the outside, and he told me what your office did for him, and it is amazing to me. Can you, for the record, talk about what that juvenile lifers whole process now has meant for you and your staff?
Yeah, I'm going to touch it on briefly, but I will give my first assistant, Jim McHugh, the liberty of talking about it, because he's the one who created the unit. But I will tell you this, this is a historic moment. We have never seen people who were deemed to be relegated to prison for life come out and actually show that they have been making positive adjustments just because. They never thought they were going to see the light of day, and inside, they began to do things that are valuable to the prisons, like run their programs and mentor people that come in that were a little hot-headed, that needed to be controlled, so that there's safety in that prison as well. The type of compassion that these individuals have been receiving, not just from lawyers and people in the community, but from the family of the victims, is amazing, and it really speaks to humanity in saying that they believe that people deserve second chances, and that it's not going to be worth the human capital that we're wasting to keep them engaged, to keep them in prison forever. So I'm going to give Mr. McHugh a moment.
Mr. McHugh, give us some of the history of how it got started and what the local impact is.
Yes, Councilman Jones, the unit got started July 1st of last year, after the United States Supreme Court had issued its two opinions in Miller and Montgomery, mandating that juveniles that were sentenced to life without the possibility of parole had to be resentenced and given an opportunity to be released. And so we started our unit after the city, we negotiated with the city for funding for the unit, and we have, at this time, five attorneys and two mitigators that are working on two hundred and twenty-five cases.
Two hundred and twenty-five cases.
And these men and women are housed throughout the state, as far as Erie, Pennsylvania, twenty-one different prisons that we have visited. We build a rapport with our client. We have to go back thirty, forty, in some cases fifty, and in one case, sixty years to find out what this individual has been doing in the prison, what they were doing on the streets of Philadelphia in the sixties and seventies, when they were incarcerated for the rest of their lives. Of the two hundred and twenty-five individuals that we represent, forty percent did not kill anybody. They were convicted of second-degree murder. They were accomplices to the crime, and they were sent away for life without the possibility of parole. So forty percent of the individuals that are coming out were not even convicted of first-degree murder. As Kier said, these individuals are leaders in the prison. We have unsolicited letters from the wardens of the state prisons, counselors, correction officers, telling us what an amazing individual, what amazing person they were in the prison, and they did all of this without the hope of getting out, because the law was set for a long time that they would never see parole. It was life without the possibility of parole. A number of our clients that we have have gone on to get certificates in construction, HVAC, college degrees, things of that nature, doing all of this and helping within the prison without the possibility of getting out. And so now that that has come forward, the sentencings that go forward in the Criminal Justice Center are really incredibly moving events, where they get an opportunity to talk about the crimes that they've committed, apologize for the crimes that they committed. And we see so much interaction between these individuals and the families of the victims.
I'll catch you on my second round. I'm going to turn the mic over to my chair, Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I have to say to Councilman Jones, I've been making that argument about that real lawyer versus defender for a long time, so...
Thank you, Councilman Greenlee.
Just on this pension thing, real quick, first of all, when you talk about the disparity in salaries, I don't know if you know, are some of those other cities, do those defenders get pensions? Because I would think that would make the disparity even wider between some of those other city...
Yeah. So many of them, those who are not nonprofit are a part of the county's government, so if that county's government provides a pension, they do. I know when I was the chief defender in Montgomery County, our lawyers did get pensions. So even in our state, we do have lawyers that do get pensions. I think the Defender Association of Philadelphia is the only Defender Association that does not because of our nonprofit status.
Because as the Council President, Councilwoman Parker and I were talking, you know, if we can get more contributors in the pension system, it's not a bad thing either. It would help you guys, but also might help the pension system, because as the retirees grow, you know, we wouldn't mind growing the contributors too, you know? One other thing I just wanted to mention, I know, I guess it was a number of years ago now, the defender started taking on a certain percentage of homicide cases, where before they didn't. What, how does that work? Is there a certain breakdown, or...
Yeah, so the Defender Association agreed to, and I believe dating back to, what year? About nineteen ninety-five.
That far back, wow.
Yeah, to take on twenty percent of the homicide cases in the city of Philadelphia. And one of the things that that unit's work is really tremendous, there was a study done, a national study done on our office's work in that homicide unit, that talked about that our model allowed for fair dispositions that rarely came back for, you know, for wrongful convictions. We do our work so carefully and deliberately, and we do a lot of training on that area. So that is something that we took on wholeheartedly. And we also, in our homicide, we do represent those who have been deemed to be capital cases, which the district attorney's office has said that they are going to enforce the death penalty.
Mm-hmm, okay. Obviously, that's very important. How about caseload for your office? On average, what does a lawyer take on? And I guess, again, do you have any comparison to what others do?
Yeah, well, for the state of Pennsylvania, our office has the largest caseload, obviously, and we are the largest office in the state and the fifth-largest in the country. So our caseloads are pretty high in comparison to the nation in terms of people who do this work or organizations that do this work. We have it, we don't have individual cases per attorney, but we can get that for you. I brought together the total cases, but I will definitely get that information to you. We have it available for us.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Thank you, and thank you for all the work you do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman McHugh and Cynthia.
Thank you, good afternoon, and I'll try to be brief. Councilman Greenlee, who's been rushing us all afternoon. I want to thank you for all the work that you do. I really appreciate this motto, "Equal pay for equal justice." I think that's pretty cool. And I particularly want to appreciate the fact that I have a substantially larger number of folks who utilize your services than any of my council districts. We're usually very competitive, except when we are depleting resources, right? And then everybody's quick to say, I'm the last one. So once again, council district number seven is number one. In talking about the, how do we get to parity, in your discussions with our budget office, is there a willingness to create a plan to get us close to parity? Does your budget reflect that this year?
Yes, so we recently gave a parity plan to the city, and it was a three-year plan to get us up to where the district attorneys are now. I don't know where they'll be in three years. And the mayor, and I will thank him very much for what he did, but he did provide some money to that first step towards parity, with the understanding that future parity may come...
So what's that, can you quantify that for me? What does that mean, per person?
So per person, that would allow us to give our lawyers about an average of six thousand dollars. Our lawyers, an average of six thousand dollars, some, you know, lower levels and some at a higher levels, which would bring us some step closer towards our DA counterparts. We asked for a $2.4 million appropriation this year towards parity. The city did give us one million towards that, and we hope to be able to get some more so that we can provide the rest of the staff that we could not give any money to some parity as well. We really wanted to focus on those lawyers that we were losing in that third, fourth, I'm sorry, fourth, fifth, and sixth year.
Yeah, I know, this is year five. Yeah, year five is really huge.
And so we were able to give those lawyers something, but those lawyers who have been at our office for ten, twelve, thirteen years, we still were not able to provide them any relief.
Okay, so they're not going to get the six, or they only get the six?
They're not going to get, some of our, it's like about half of our staff would be able to get this, be able to get some money towards parity. The other half, the million dollars just didn't stretch that far.
So the additional one, one point five would get you where?
The additional one point five would allow us to provide all of our staff with some money towards parity. It is the first step in our three-year plan.
And what does year two ask for, and what does year three ask for?
Year two, altogether over the three-year plan, is six point five million. So the first year, we asked for two point five, the second year, two, and the third year, two.
Okay, two. Did you quantify for the mayor's team what, how many, much more services that gets them?
We gave the mayor's team everything we gave council in terms of, we provide services because this is what we do.
I know.
We really...
But I'm saying, in terms of quantifying, you were able to really, in a succinct way in your presentation, capture the savings?
Mm-hmm.
So can we correlate that extra one point five? What does that get us in terms of savings and people serve, particularly under this new kind of scenario that we're living in? I know you guys have started to work around some of the immigrant issues and so forth. Before the end of budget, if you could submit to the council president what that buys us, to a certain degree, what that kind of investment will get us in terms of services?
Yes.
I think that that would be helpful in getting council to understand, you know, what kind of investment we want to make.
I will, and we did provide in our written submission what that would, what we projected in terms of the savings that would save the city.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, it's on the last page.
On the last slide?
I believe. And if you just have the slide presentation, I apologize.
No, I have, yeah, no, I have your page of your presentation.
Yeah, we might have...
I was looking for that one here.
You know what? I know we had drafted it, and we can get it for you, because we did kind of do a projection as to what that would buy you in terms of services and savings to the city. In addition to us keeping experienced lawyers so that we can do all these things, we did put in a projected number of what that would buy you. Actually, I'm sorry. So we have it here, and this is, we project that the increased salaries will increase our retention rate by twenty percent, saving over eight hundred thousand dollars. More experienced lawyers also increase our ability to intervene pre-trial, which is some of the reform efforts around bail, and that would also produce a huge savings in our criminal justice costs, especially our prison costs.
What page is that? What pages?
This, it may not be in your packet.
When I looked at page thirteen, where you have your pay parity, I don't see those numbers. I just wanted to make sure. Okay, if you can submit that some...
We will submit it.
I think that would be real helpful. I think our public safety chair here has a very ambitious goal about how do we close down a prison as opposed to build a new one. And I know that this is an important component of it, and I know that the situation is getting more complicated as we talk about aspiring citizens and others, and I'd like to, I know that you're doing, you're being as proactive as you can. I'd like to see how we better support that. You know, and New York and other folks are doing amazing things as it relates to some of the legal work there, and I want to see us at least, obviously, we're not New York, but at least up to par. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Many of the questions I initially had have been answered. I want to thank you, Ms. Bradford-Grey, for your testimony, as well as providing the opportunity for members of council and staff toward Public Defender's Office. I'm not sure if everyone was as familiar, and I talked about this earlier, when another department was testifying, that you provide expungement on a daily basis. In fact, I had a constituent today, I referred to the Public Defender's Office regarding an expungement issue. One other thing, and I saw in your testimony, you talked about a lot of different initiatives that you've done, and I think your testimony is quite explicit reference to return on savings that the city receives from the work that the Public Defender's Office does. I know Councilman Greenlee's been a longtime opponent of the Public Defender's Office. Did you talk a little bit about the Donify app that you have?
Yes.
If you can give a little perspective, because I think you've been very creative in how you use technology and how you really maximize the limited resource that your office has.
One of the great things about my job is I get to work with some amazing people. So I will say that I have made some really great hires, and my chief adult social worker, Curtis Watkins, is in the back. He actually went after this opportunity when he knew that the things that were happening in court were because of lack of information at the fingertips of the judge to make vital decisions as to how to shuffle people back into the community supported. So when we saw that this woman had created an app that brought to our fingertips all of the different services in our city by geographical area, we wanted in, because we knew our lawyers needed that. Fox 29 News did a story on this opportunity. They did a story based on the creativeness, well, the innovation of it, but also on how it saves on jail, prison time. It reduces prison time by eighty percent. One of our lawyers talked about how she was able to get housing for her client in two days as opposed to the thirty-day delay that it would have taken ordinarily because of the information that she had on her app and the phone calls that she made to get our client into that housing, so that the judge could give an ankle monitor to that person with assurances that they would be housed and be able to make it to court. So I think that that was bringing technology into our realm of services, bringing access to services to people, but also empowering them to make some of their own choices and work on their own problems, so that the system doesn't have to do it for them, is what we're trying to do.
Right, and I mean, that just shows another example of how your office has been very creative, and yes, you are there to represent someone that has been charged with possibly a possible crime, but also the fact that that person at that situation may need other services, and the fact that too often, it's not the right opportunity to bring that connection or provide those services, and the fact that you are using that in a way, in a holistic way, is really helping to address public safety and some of the issues we have in our city. And as a former DA, I don't have much hair anymore, but I had some hair back then, I remember the great training that the Public Defender's Office provided. I often felt it was better than the training that the district attorney's office received. Now, I came from another office before I came in a DA's office, but I've always been impressed with the level of skill, expertise, dedication, and lawyering that the PD's office has provided over the years, and that's even been enhanced through your service and your new role and the role of your staff. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Once again, Sam disagrees, but what can I say? Can you touch on him while we have you here, and your presentation, you, the courts, and the district attorney office all gave really comprehensive evaluations and presentations, and we thank you for that. It allows us to make better decisions. But while we have you, and switching a little bit to your chair of the Justice Reform, where in your role within the Defender's Association? Bail reform, and if we look at, per se, a Washington... at, per se, a Washington model, or a New Jersey, which I like to call bail light model, the social service component that you're already doing, and how you managed to start to inculcate that into your services, how, how do you see that evolving?
So, I, thank you for that question, I think that's a great question. One of the things that our work allows us to do is understand the needs of people. Some of the times, we are the first person to understand that someone has mental health issues, or depression issues, or whatever it is that's contributing to them coming into our system. So our work and our role right now as partners in reducing our prison, prison population, is to address those needs and coach people to understand how that plays a part in their behavior. And our social workers, under the McArthur initiatives, the early bail review that has been talked about extensively today, the, the heavy, the lifting that the defender do, I don't think goes unnoticed to many of people, other people. We make initial contact with those people by going up to the prison and talking to them, getting a long history of information from them, our, our paralegal then comes back and provides that information to the lawyer who makes phone calls to family members, or service providers, or church members, or, or employers, whoever that is. Then, our social services unit makes one-on-one contact with them to bring them in, to make sure that they are supported, connected, and they get everything they need so that they are not out there re-offending. That understanding and that snapshot of what we are doing is providing us a, a basic understanding of what is available to people that is already in their neighborhoods, what have they missed the mark on getting connected to because they just don't know about it, and how can we steer those, them into those directions. We have seen that many of the people that we represent with that model, in terms of getting them out of bail, I mean, out of jail pre-trial, have not come back. They've made it to court, and they are being more responsible about their lives now that they know that they're supported, they feel like they've been treated fairly, the process has been explained to them, whereas before, they'd show up on a screen, some would stay in, if they got out at some point, they would get out, when, with no understanding of their needs. They'd go back to their community, sometimes even more desperate than they came in. If they stayed into the system over 30 days, if they had any public benefits that were state-funded, those benefits were shut off, and then the city would have to pick up that tab while they're in the prison, which we, at our Criminal Justice Reform Committee hearing, found out through the prison systems that that's a $65 million a year price tag. So I think that this is smarter on crime for the areas that we are seeing that are not necessarily criminal justice issues, but they are social issues that contribute to behavior. I would really like, hope that one day we can narrow our, our net in our criminal justice system, put more money into those professionals that are designed or, or trained to deal with those issues better, and use our system for real things that threaten our safety. That is what it was designed for, and we have expanded our, our correction officer's role to be social workers, we've expanded our police officer's role, right? And so I, I think that when we're looking, when we're utilizing people such as our social workers to help us understand the people that we represent, we have a better understanding of their needs and a better opportunity to present it to decision-makers. So I know that's the model that can help us figure out how we can do that in terms of placing conditions of release versus giving bail, it's been done in other states, and in fact, a federal judge in Texas just deemed their bail system to be unconstitutional. So this is coming, and I'm glad that the Criminal Justice Reform Committee is exploring this, because it is spreading like wildfire. I know Councilman Jones has immersed himself in criminal justice reform issues, and he is seeing across the nation, this is more prevalent, and it can be done. We are starting on something right now, and I'm not going to negate the efforts that we're making in, on our McArthur initiatives, but we can go a lot further, we just have to understand what it is we're trying to do and how it fits into our system.
Mr. President, I rest my case.
Well, I think at the end of the day, the jury will make the appropriate decision and grade an A-plus to this particular panel.
Thank you so much.
As it relates to, thank you.
And I must say, I, I do thank you very much for keeping criminal justice reform local, we do understand what's going on on, on our national level, and I think it's going to be up to individual states to make sure that reform happens, because it's so important, the stakes are way too high for people, they can't overcome some of the things that happen in here, and so when we're intentional about what we do with people, I think we make better decisions about our safety. So thank you so much, Councilman.
Thank you.
And I want to make one more observation, we talked, a lot of people talked about stealing their staff, I think one of our staff members has joined you, Council President, Jessica Sanchez, so I will speak to the testimony.
I just got reprimanded, because, for whatever reason, you know you draw blanks every now and then, and I called a lawyer upstairs to ask the question, and then I looked at, where's she at? Oh, she's not back there, Jessica, and I said, man, what? I got a personal staff that used to work there, right? And she reminded me of that, right? So, I got, but I thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you for your, your public service, we really appreciate it.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, we're gonna go into recess until what time? Till 5, and we will have testimony from the public.
I forgot to say a lot of stuff, but, thank you, Councilman Greenlee. Thanks, I appreciate it.